All right, it's six o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Let's pause for a moment of reflection. Okay. Mr. Pope, do you want to lead us in that?
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. I did, yeah. Willie, you want to lead us in a roll call and establish our forums?
Sure. Jennifer Roberts.
Here.
Jen Bam.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Steve Dennis.
Here.
Marissa Gag.
Here. All right, we're all here. First order of business approving the minutes from the February meeting. Those are in your drive as well as hard copies located at the back of the room. Sure, we've all had time to review those.
Make a motion to approve minutes from the prior meeting.
Have a motion. Do we have a second to approve the minutes from the prior meeting? We have a motion in a second. All in favor of approving February 2023 minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay, motion carried. Before, we're gonna kind of switch the order of the agenda for a second because I know we have somebody who needs to make a public comment before waiting until the end. And also, as like a little bit of a housekeeping measure, currently, the sign-in sheet has a link for your address or for speakers' addresses. Because it is documented on that sheet, we are going to waive the requirement of stating your address at the podium. These meetings get put on YouTube and I understand the sensitivity to not wanting your address being broadcast for everybody, you know, who may go back and watch this. So with that, that's just a little housekeeping thing. Those public comment guidelines are listed on the website in the town council section, and those changes will be reflected after this meeting. So with that, we'll open it up for public comment. I'll go for it.
The only update I have is that it's a larger project than I anticipated, a much larger project than I anticipated. I said this last two months that it would be done. It's not. But the suit will be filed any day now. I just received the final bit of information from the town this week, and it is by a factor of 20 or below, because I participate, not fatal to the cause or anything like that. The town remains committed to fight, but that is my long-winded way to say it's not done yet.
Sounds like you're getting closer.
We are, I promise that, but I'm embarrassed that it's not done. I apologize to you.
Well, perhaps that signifies the tremendous amount of work that's still to be done. Because I know the last time that Joanne and Doug and Fletcher and I met with the town, we only have a list of 42 items, and most of those items were, I thought, were pretty serious. That's the reason I added up with my guess, around $300,000. That didn't include the other buildings. So part of the reason that I read all the documents that were required by RENTCON to sign, and I don't think they did, was because Doug had asked me to, and he asked me to represent him as far as work that was gonna be done on the buildings that he, two buildings across the street here. After one of the meetings with the town where we showed him a list that was back in 1918, walked across the street, and there was a carpenter there that was excellent, and he was proud of his tools, proud of his equipment, and he was installing clear white pine. And so after but after 19 years, this is clear white pine was protected by an overhang on the railroad depot, the Anderson Young Ballet Theater. There's no overhangs protecting the clear white pine that was installed over here. Clear white pine is not a designated product to be used by the architects. They had products, they recommended cement board, another product, borrel. It's hard to find any wood that's good, can last for any significant amount of time now. I should get woods from foreign countries, and I try to stick to the United States. So this is just my example, one of the reasons that I think this is very serious. And there's windows over there that are leaking. We've done what we can to stop the leaking, but one of the windows is a plate glass window. And I believe it's a thermal panel unit, and it's barely in the opening. This is a large window. Heavy winds, water still gets through there. I don't care if you cough, it'll vibrate, and that's where the chillado's trying to sign us over here. That north large plate glass window is just barely hanging in there. Scott had authorized us to go ahead and do a number of things a few years ago, just to stop cap majors. There's nothing that we did that's a permanent major, because that would have taken a lot more time, a lot more money. That's my presentation. Thank you for moving me up here. Got my business under me, didn't I?
Thanks. Any other public comments that need to go at the beginning? With that, clerk treasurer's report, Willie, you're up.
All right, I think all of you have had a chance to look at the raise urgency. We spent a little bit over $2 million on our bills this month. I'd like to buy anyone that hasn't come up to the clerk's office and look over this and see if they've got any suggestions. This is where we could save money, or maybe they know somebody give us better discount or something, we'll take it. General fund, we haven't balanced everything yet. General funds say about 994,000, so we're in good shape there. That's about all I have.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve the claims for the month of February? As presented by our treasurer, Willie Bowles.
So a motion second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the motion for the claims for the month of February. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We can go into department reports now. First one up is police. Yeah.
Yeah. I apologize, I walked in and I realized I kind of dressed like a fire.
Looks nice.
He picked on me right out of the shade.
I had to.
All right, so we've held our annual training meeting for the year so we can make sure we get all our hours for 2023. We made sure we did get our 2022, so we're all still police. And meet all legal requirements. So that was a good meeting, and we just had taser training yesterday, and everybody did it and didn't get hurt, so it was a good day. The training standards for the state of Indiana have kind of changed. They used to be you were allowed to do static training, which was just simply shooting a target with a taser, which was, was a good thing. My department was very bored of that and thought it was ridiculous. So now they've made a new law that it has to be more dynamic, so my guys are excited. And that's why South Madison gave us some money for a taser suit, so we can actually have a bad guy fighting, running, all that. And we have to decide to taze or pepper or shoot or tackle or whatever we choose to do. And it's, it's more hands-on and real. So training was great, because I was put on my own to crow the yesterday. We just received six new patrol rifles. We purchased them from a company out of Seymour, Indiana called Fostec. Super great group to work with. They, when we were calling about rifle prices, they actually drove up to meet with us to bring us their rifles, and we hit it off immediately and realized, yeah, I want to keep my money in Indiana. So we were able to purchase six rifles at this time. We're closing in on the final graphic design for the new squad cars. We currently have one that we have to sticker. So all sorts out in it right now, and it's totally legal without the stickers, but we're gonna put some on. We've just been trying to tweak the design and make sure we get something we want. And then Frederick's Construction has finalized the work in the building where they put in new doors, and we've installed a shower back in the back in our evidence scene area. If you haven't seen it, we just, we just built a new area. I say built, we fabricated an area in the building to serve as our evidence room. So we're no longer having evidence in a room where people are sitting and eating and talking. So nobody knows what's on marijuana these days or anything, so we've now contained it in an area, and there's a shower available right there if we need to decontaminate or something like that. Total reported dispatch calls to the county was 1,390 for the month. That is it.
Yes, sir.
Talk to them, if you will, about the flock cameras.
Ah, and the flock cameras were installed. Because I do everything a month behind. They just completed that yesterday, so all four of our flock cameras are up and running. And we just had a pursuit yesterday. I say a pursuit, we got to watch a guy drive fast away from us because of our car's entrance. So we'll get a new fleet here soon, so hopefully returns. With that being said, there was a flock, it was a stolen car, came from a 67, and it actually had been involved in a carjacking down in Indianapolis, and it ran right into Anderson. So there's a lot of, a lot of stuff flows through your town on a daily basis. These flock cameras are really gonna open up the window for that. Three, three or four.
Four, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Lavelle or Lavelle's have theirs, Ingalls, Anderson's getting, I don't know if they're 100% up now. Yeah, they're all up, and we all piggyback off each other. So if I, if I get a trigger on one of my flocks because of vehicles traveling, it'll then trigger other ones and we can try to pattern where it's going. We're excited.
Just to comment on that, in Anderson, we've, we've solved three cases in the last month with, with the flock cameras. They're fabulous.
Yeah. One thing we'd like to see in the future is maybe like new housing additions. Fund the first camera to be installed at the entries to their, to their additions. That way, if there was a break in in the addition or, or any kind of crime, the flock would help us solve those. And that's another funding avenue for a new addition. Or even like the parks department, we talked there and a little bit about that, maybe digging into their pocket alone, getting them in the park.
Is there funding available for the portable ones where we can move them around, maybe get two or three to move them? They're not stationary, like we could move them.
On up, like a look into.
We get it like any, or site open, like the Starbucks.
Anywhere.
Anywhere.
They will, they will be good, absolutely.
I mean, I think if we've got these subdivisions coming in, that has to be a part of their design standards. But we could also do it for non-residential.
Yes.
Well.
Oh, it'd be great, like back on the back with the Dr. Spire or any of them.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing that up. I would have brought it up next month, the night 30.
Do they give you a printout on the traffic count?
Oh, yeah, 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 we can log in and look at it every day. One that was first founded out by the 2019, the numbers, it was like about three hours, it was pushing 1,500 degrees, just.
Yeah.
It is.
All right, thanks. Okay, is George on Zoom? Nope, no, okay. I think you're, yeah, right. Aaron, you're up.
Good evening. I don't have anything pressing to add other than what's in my report, so if you all have any questions about what's in the report or any general questions, I would be happy to answer those as best I can.
I did hear on the park that with the baseball side-ups, they've had an extremely large number of.
Yes, yeah, so they're over 700.
Yeah.
Signups so far, which is numbers they haven't seen for 20 years.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's great. It's gonna be busy.
Any other questions for Aaron?
Are they still looking for youth umpires, like, yes, like teenagers and things like that?
Yep.
Todd Miller would be the best one to contact. He's in our office, so if you call the park office at 778-2222, we can get you in touch with him.
Thanks, I heard, spoke to Adam last night, Truman, who's the baseball, I guess.
Baseball director.
Director or whatever, and he was gonna have like some classes and a meet and greet for the high school students and stuff.
Just trying to recruit some people.
Yep.
Yep.
Any problems getting people to the golf course with the road?
We've given a lot of directions, so, yeah. Thankfully, we haven't had too much nice weather, but.
Did three Japanese ladies, Chinese ladies make it?
Yes, they did.
Okay, very good. That was tough.
Anything else for Aaron? All right, thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
All right, planning department?
Ever. Building permit summary in front of you. I don't have too much. The building condemnation order has been lifted for 116, 118 West State Street. That was lifted at the February BCA meeting, so both of those businesses have COOs. I know the vape shop has to go through the health department to reopen, so that's kind of on them, but they're ready to go. Our business park trail that we started late last year, we've gotten a fully executed contract from In-Not, so I am waiting on one sheet of paper to get authorized, and then we can really notice to proceed with that. True, it's our. We got the, they got the bid, so. Um, other than that, Community Crossings is moving along well, as well as the transportation and stormwater grant. Any questions on anything I've got?
Okay. Looked into those block cameras for our UDO requirements and all sorts of development. I think that's a really excellent idea. All right, Scott.
So. So the pad for the Osweary Cemetery is complete, and we're gonna take delivery of that on Wednesday next week, the 15th. So we're looking forward to that. As we alluded, the Hilton Avenue is shut down right now for the installation of the culvert. They build down the roads. It's, it used to be years and years ago a state road, so it's fairly thick. As they have started to dig into it, they've discovered a lot of spaghetti as far as drainage, so it's a good thing we're doing it. Next photo, based on input of a lot of the shop owners around town, we've made it clear, clearer where the public parking is, so you'll see Ricky. See where Ricky and his crew have installed these public parking signs, and we're gonna continue to add some more marketing, especially here by the water mat, to make it clear which spots are public and which ones are private. Pendleton is hosting next week the annual Madison County Stormwater Contractor Training, which is part of we're required to do to, that's part of the consortium for the county, is to give training to contractors so that they don't pollute our waters. That's part of maintaining our stormwater discharge permit. And then the first public meeting on how we're addressing growth in Pendleton will be March 27, 6:00 PM. We're not so sure where yet. If we're looking at the pit, maybe here, as soon as we get that locked on. So, that, questions?
Thanks. Moving on to old business, 2304 Community Development Coordinator position and wage. The job descriptions are available on our drive and also at the back of the room. You have any comments on how this developed with PBA and Main Street? Do you have any comments on how this came together, like earlier, a job description, everything?
It's gonna be a very busy job, whoever we select to do it. Also have not only, we get some towns that are under contract with Chamber of Commerce, formerly PBA, and Main Street Pendleton to go after grants, handle events and programs. Really looking forward to it. Had a lot of excitement in the community that we're getting somebody to do this. More than you would think, so.
When we pulled that job description together, you know, we utilized PBA's points of what they wanted, Main Street, what they wanted, and we kind of came together to form this master job description, so all bodies were.
Everybody had input.
Yes, yes.
We did it together.
Right.
First of all, thank you for the job description. I've read it several times, and it looks really good. I just have a couple of questions. I'm 100% for this, but the last meeting, we talked about how the PBA and the Main Street was going to put in a certain amount for the salary. Where is that anywhere?
It's 10,000 each.
I mean, shouldn't we have it somewhere writing?
Well, we're, the next steps are to draw up a contract between each entity to outline the scope of work that that person will do as part of that contract between us and the PBA.
Well, I was just thinking 10 to 15 years down the road, when none of us really are probably gonna be here. The understanding of who's responsible for what.
So at some point, looking at what other towns that are experiencing fast growth went through, they, this, this is the model where lessons learned from other towns, and eventually what happens is that that becomes three positions, spins off into a full-time job with their chamber, a full-time job with their Main Street. By then, as you can imagine, the population's starting to be back to. But Fishers was 20 years ago.
To kind of piggyback on that, I wonder, would it be worthwhile when you're writing the contract between the three, something about revisiting this within a certain amount of years? To reevaluate where we are and whether it's worth splitting it, or, I mean, is that how they edge it, I guess?
Yeah, so that's, that's a good point. We've just discussed that. Basically, it's within, probably come up with, within a few weeks or a few months now. You know, let's just say it's worst case scenario, it's not working. Both the entities want to pull out of the contract. There's nothing saying that we couldn't pull that position back to our time position. But we'll see. You know, I, I'm confident that whatever the future brings, it's with that, we'll be adjusted.
I'd have to agree with what Steve was working on about $10,000 from Main Street, $10,000 from PBA. That, maybe that needs to be in the salary orders someplace. I mean, we're talking 60, $7,000.
It alludes in the, into the job description.
And it doesn't say, unless I misread it, it doesn't say we're giving 10,000, and they're giving 10,000.
This is, this is a job description. We wouldn't put that in advertisement for a job.
Yeah, but we'll give, I think we're getting ready to approve $66,000.
Yes.
In the way.
Salary, yes. Right.
So we're just gonna pay 46,000. Close, exactly what Steve said. I'm wrong, tell me. But I, I think we.
Well, if you wanted, I mean, if you, this is the job description. Get to work out. First step was, like I said, last month, we worked on the job description. They have each had a more detailed job description. We're trying to make this a little bit more generic, that's more specific. Those, the specific items, those things that need to be more specific, that will be in the scope of work for that contract.
With PBA and Main Street?
Yeah, and it'll be a contract with each entity.
Like on our salary orders, we don't necessarily spell out, like, who's paid out of utility, who's paid out of general fund.
Right.
Whatever. And so this is just allowing for that wage to be drawn. Before the person is hired, there will be an agreement signed between us, PBA and Main Street. You know, somehow they get cold feet between now and then, then I think the entire process starts back over.
Right.
I mean, is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Pendleton's part of it. What fund does it be drawn?
So it'll be a planning position, the planning is funded. Utilities. Although they do have a pretty good revenue stream from construction permits, building permits, certificates of occupancy. That's.
And then my last question is, under the qualifications, it says become certified as a grant administrator within the first 12 months. What I've heard and spoken to people about is that grant writing is a big part of it. Are we gonna be looking for somebody that's already has that?
Um, we would like somebody to go through that certification process, mostly if they're not familiar with federal grants. I've been through that training myself. It's a great way to get grounded on federal grants work, but they can also be, there is other certifications, professional certifications in grant writing.
Thank you.
But as you know, as you see, the job description is, has a heavy emphasis on communication.
So Hannah will kind of be monitoring where this person's time is spent, because, I mean, some of the stuff is pretty vague and like could suck a lot of time, if really, like, was she getting paid more for, for whoever, grant writing, but she's planning an event that's taking all of her hours.
Yeah, that's, we've had a lot of discussion about there. So there could be one, one week where it's just, you know, 100% PBA, or.
It's just something that has to be monitored.
Right, yeah, so that person will report to the planning director, which is. They're gonna have to be very well, somebody self-moved and self-managed, because they're big, going to a lot of night meetings, events, that sort of thing. So it's, it's not gonna be an easy job, because there's some people that would love to have that job. It's just their nature and.
I think moving forward with that position too, something I can do is kind of set up a system for them so they can keep track of them. If they, you know, yeah, don't want to do that, it'll be important.
Yeah, so it's really easy to lose track if you just get sucked into a project.
Right, yeah, absolutely. So just putting those systems in place before they get here, when they get here, it's gonna be important. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I got one.
Oh.
Just, just piggyback on Chuck's comment. The first one here is, is that this ordinance to approve $2,584.05 per bag. 26 pays at 67,185. With that being said, again, there's nothing said about the 20 grand coming from two other entities. So guessing, we're just expecting that if they go, hey, we can't, then you guys are proving $67,000 salary position. And I know, I know, I'm, I'm a, I like to do things with a handshake, but I'm using.
20 grand, I would. I don't understand what's your point?
Well, I could, so the town is all in at $67,185.03 per salary. Okay. But no agreement with anybody.
We're not going, but I think that we have the understanding here within this room that we're not going to hire anybody without the agreement being signed between PBA slash Pendleton Chamber and Main Street and the town setting up the structure. What I'm saying, what I, my, my analogy was, in our salary ordinance, even though we have people who are paid through the utility, that it may not be readily apparent that they're utility people, we don't spell out where their salary comes from. And so we will have an agreement between the other two entities and ourselves before this person is ever hired.
So, so the 67,000, I'm just, 67,000, we can subtract 20 from that, and that's what the town is in.
Yes.
Yes.
Until they go belly up, and then according to this, you're gonna be in for the full.
No. You didn't hear what I said. If we get into the scenario where it's no longer a full-time position, we can cut it back to, yeah, we can cut it back.
A third or.
What if those two say, hey, we can't?
Well, then we're in that same situation. So you just.
Or you just only have the 67,000.
Yeah, I mean, this is the, I will stay. It's not like. Yeah, I mean, this is the, I will stay. It's not like we're entering into a five-year union contract with no.
Well, they agree what you were discussing, is inner, you know, town, where you're like town Pendleton, town employees. But when you're seeking money from outside entities, it just concerns me, like, I'm like, we don't have the ten.
I understand, but I understand your point, that you don't want us to be on the hook for something we don't need to be on the hook for. But what I'm assuring you is that there is an agreement that, that will be signed before we hire a person, spelling out the roles and responsibilities of the three organizations that are on the hook for this position, being PBA slash Pendleton Chamber, Main Street and the town.
Right, so it'll be an MOU of that.
Well, yeah, remember MOU and.
Contract.
A contract, some right, or whatever we want to call it.
And we'll usually between two public entities. This will be between a public and private.
Along Marx line here, are we going to put anything or say anything to the applicants that this might be a possibly done, wrote it might go from full-time to a part-time job?
Yeah, that, I think that, that's going to be an important thing that we stress and actually scream for, is the fact that we want to keep the chain of command, a unified chain of command where it's very clear who their boss is. But we'll be doing work under contract for these two entities. And so, and how that position, it's really an incubator type position. And as that position matures, we can talk through, we will talk, walk, talk through and walk them through with that, with the possibility be, because I would think any candidate that's worth anything is going to be smart enough to say, but how do you think this will mature? How, how do I think they start to spin off?
And I think that everybody's.
And part of that will be also, what if it does go south?
Right, I mean, I think that everybody understands this is a newly created position that has some quirks, but not the other positions within the town doesn't have, like, you know, this is a different situation. So I think the applicants understand that going into it. And I think there's also going to be a discussion about the exit strategy, you know, at the, if this thing grows and the other two organizations are successful, you know, how do they get to determine where they go if they say, well, I really want to stay at PBA, or I really want to go at Main Street?
Right.
How that looks, I think that the applicant is going to be understanding that all of this is kind of very fluid right now.
It'll be driven, I think, more by population growth than by time.
Yeah, I think we'll end up using a hundred percent of his time and have to tell the others, you know, something else, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll find that. We'll want that to be a full-time Pendleton person before they do.
Right.
But we never, we'll see.
And one other thing, I'd like to see a little more language in here with this forty hours, this, just blacks. Like, we need to spell out something, because you and I probably will be here ten years.
So variable hours.
I, yeah, I understand your opinion, I understand my opinion.
Yeah, we didn't want to put, you know, nine to five, because that won't work with this job.
Right.
We don't have a substantial number.
And weekends.
And weekends, so.
Variable.
Karen, we had a comment on Zoom?
Yes, will the contract include an annual escalator clause, so this person's salary can be increased each year?
So it'll be, the salary is determined by the salary ordinance.
Right.
It is a peer to the.
Planning administrator.
Planning administrator. So, um, looks like the acquisition will keep in, same with that other pair of positions.
Anything else on Zoom? Okay. Any other questions? Comments, concerns about twenty-three oh four? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting twenty-three oh four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried. Okay, new business, I'm going to make a motion to amend new business to add twenty-three oh seven unused vacation time ordinance that I printed, that everybody has. I also emailed it earlier in the week, or last week, I guess. We can add that to the bottom of this, though. So, um, let's go ahead and start with twenty-three oh five. Oh wait, I guess I need a second to amend the agenda. To add twenty-three oh seven.
Make a motion to amend the agenda. Again.
Okay. All in favor of amending the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, twenty-three oh five, amending the UDO. Hannah, do you want to talk about those amendments?
Yeah, um, these are some amendments. I've been doing a deep dive into our UDO page by page the last month. Hundred and sixty pages, so about halfway through it. Um, but these were just some amendments on clarifying uses that weren't very clear. Some language scripters errors, antinomies standards, and then some definitions that were not present. So, um, I know it seems like we have known this document a lot, but as we use it, when it began in October of twenty-one, it just becomes more and more clear, things that either need to be changed, removed, amended, things like that. So it is a living document, but at its core, it's a very solid document. Before we get through developments that have been happening really well with it, so I commend you guys and planning commission.
And all twenty-eight of these received a favorable recommendation from planning commission?
Yes, a few of them were, you can see in the very last column, a few words switched around within the amendment. Were it was a question, and they answered my question in there.
Yep. Yeah, it's a, it's a lot to go through these amendments every month with planning commission, but I commend the group for sticking with it, making it as tight as we can. So, yeah.
Yeah.
We have a motion to approve the amendments to the UDO. Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the amendments to the UDO and ordinance twenty-three oh five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we need, the planning commission counts as the first, perfect. Okay, ordinance twenty-three oh six, amended economic development rider. Scott, do you want to talk about this?
So we have that already. MP has asked us to update what their criteria is. Basically, instead of half a thousand kilowatts, which is a megawatt. Can I say half, half a megawatt, half. It's now all thousand kilowatts.
One megawatt. Instead of being five hundred kilowatts, it is now one megawatt is the requirement to qualify for these incentives by MP. This is not an incentive that the town is offering for people who develop large demand clients. This is from MP, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And it makes no difference. It, it doesn't affect our.
Right, just because we have an economic development rider, we had to make our language match MP's language. Okay. Any questions for Scott about the MP economic development rider? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-three dash oh six.
Hey, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve twenty-three oh six amended economic development rider? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have to suspend the rules, or are we okay?
We're, we're ahead of time.
Okay, perfect. We will just let that ride to April for second. All right, resolution twenty-three oh two, South Madison Fire Protection Territory borrowing from water utility for hydrant fees. Steve, do you want to talk about this? Chris, do you guys want to, do you want to start? How?
Well, first. First of all, I'd like to make a couple of statements here before we get into that, if I could. Three little notifications here, real quick, that I want to put a shout out to the South Madison Community Foundation. They awarded this ten thousand dollar grant to replace some fire hose that was aging. So all of our apparatus have a bunch of fire hose on it that's brand new and stuff, so it'll last us for a while. Also, the Kwan is a, donated a rescue dummy. Um, it's actually, it's a pretty cool device. It's more movable-like than the thirty-year-old dummy that we actually have now. It actually has a voice box in it that where we can actually have a conversation with the firefighter for search and rescue and stuff, so it's more realistic instead of actually trying to maneuver the dummy that's thirty years old that we currently have. And also to Ascension Hospitals, they donated about ten boxes of smoke detectors for us to pass out that anybody that needs it, alls they have to do is just contact one of the fire stations. Anybody can give one per household. We just need a, an address of where it's going for the hospital's records to show that these smoke detectors are being passed out to the public itself. So, like I said, anybody can actually go to the fire stations and get a free smoke detector for the rest of the stuff. So, other than that, that's all I got. So what I'll do is, I'm going to kick this over to Steve real quick, because this is the first time that I've actually laid my eyes on this. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Steve.
Okay, um, I didn't know if we were going to speak tonight, but I will. Um, basically, this money that is from the fire hydrants is the four hundred fifty dollars times three hundred and seven hydrants. Is that correct?
Yep.
That comes to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand one fifty. I'm assuming this is a temporary solution until we as a board can come up with a better accounting of how to help the fire territory succeed with, we talked about growth in the town of Pendleton, and it went from two hundred and thirty hydrants to three hundred and seven almost overnight. The, the fire territory cannot continue to pay four hundred and fifty dollars per hydrant as these new additions come in. Something has to be done. I mean, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's with benefits and another firefighter. If you look at it in four years, five years, it's a truck. I mean, um, I'm conflicted on both ends, because I'm on the town board and I'm also a liaison with the, with the fire territory. But we have to come up with a better plan, and there are plans out there. And, and myself and, and Marissa and Fire Territory Attorney and Jeff Brand, we've sat a couple of weeks ago and talked about the certain different plans that are options that are available. I just feel that charging the territory a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year to maintain fire hydrants is exorbitant, and we need to come up with a better plan. We were, and Marissa and I have talked about this, we were thrust into this position. And we're just, I, and I think she would agree, we're trying to come up with a better idea of how we could do things. If this would continue, and, and, and every fire hydrant that would come into the town and the fire territory would be responsible, I mean, we could be in the two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar range in the next five years. And, and to me, that's ridiculous. I'm just going to say it is. And if you look around other areas regarding fire territories and what they charge to maintain them, Pendleton's at, at the highest level. I mean, most towns like Anderson and some other, they, they put that, that cost off to the consumer, and there are statutes saying you can do that. That's the main thing that I think needs to happen is the water study. Uh, which I've been told that is coming, you know, you know, we're both looking into that. But, um, and I'm just going to put this out there, um, you know, we, we're supposed to be responsible for Ingles, uh, their fire hydrants, which is like twenty-one thousand dollars. Nothing in the MOU we sign with Ingles says that we'd be responsible for those hydrants. And now Ingles is talking about having a conversation to do away with fees. So as a board, I appreciate this Band-Aid. Because this money can determine whether the fire territory needs to take out a loan for the second half of twenty twenty-three. Um, so I understand that, that this money is part of the water department's budget. Nobody has ever been able to tell me how this started years ago and how it got so high. But it's something, we all need to come together and, and, and see what, what is fair. Is that, is the fire hydrant putting it off on with the consumer? You know, under the state statute, the one oh three D, uh, you know, we can't just do that. We have to have a water study and all that. Is there some negotiation between the fire territory and the town? I just think that we, we're putting a Band-Aid on this right now, but you know, something has to be done, because, you know, the territory includes Fall Creek Township and Green Township. And some of these people, the money that's coming, that would come out of the, the fund, they don't see any benefit. And, um, we're out of left, I mean, we, we have a certain amount of money. Fire territory has a certain amount of money. And that's it. We can't raise any more money. But I'm just saying that we, we all need to come together to come up with a solution that better suits not only the territory, but the town, the, the townships. We're all partners in this. We're all in a marriage. And there's no doubt that the fire territory is going to succeed. It is succeeding, but a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year as of right now is, is, I think, a little exorbitant. And I'd like to point out too, that the budget that was approved by this town council was for two hundred and fifty dollars a hydrant times two hundred and thirty hydrants. So that's like fifty-seven five.
Fifty-seven five.
So that's what everybody approved. Um, so that, I think there's some legal problem saying that you have to, the eighty-nine thousand, we're going to defer for a period of time. I think, uh, we need to talk to Jeff about that, because the approved budget says for fifty-seven five.
Can I start off with total comments? First of all, state law requires somebody to pay for the hydrants. So you're right.
First of all, first of all, listen, I'm not trying to be contri, I'm not trying to be confrontational.
I'm not, I'm not.
I'm not trying to do any of that. I'm just.
I'm not arguing the point. I'm just laying out the facts so that everybody understands the basis for this. So one, state board of accounts, they don't allow us to do anything for free. Somebody has to pay for the hydrants.
Can understand that.
So that's the ba, that's, that's how this all got, really, guys. So there's only two ways you can do it. About three. Our department pays for it, or the, uh, our consumers with the water pay for it, or you do a high, those are your three options. Second of all, it's not just for maintenance of the hydrant. Hydrants alone are expensive. They're expensive to install.
Forty-eight hundred dollars for a hydrant.
So what you got to understand, though, is the capacity of the water towers, the water capacity of the lines are all driven by what's called fire flow.
Yes, I know that.
That's the reason you have the bubble at the top of the water tower. The water tower does two things. It holds capacity for fire flow, but it also regulates pressure. If we were just regulating pressure and not fire flow, it would just be a con. We've seen them sometimes out west, whatever. Maybe ten foot and five foot in diameter. So that whole bubble up there, that's only for fire flow. In fact, we have twelve inch, ten inch lines are for fire flow. If we didn't have fire flow, it would be two inches. They're a lot cheaper to install. In fact, you know, you'd have to dig a trench to get a two-inch line and bore it. The capacity of the, um, water treatment plant, which we're paying off a bond. That is the whole design of that, the whole capacity, the whole size of it is, is run by fire flow. That's why you'll see hydrant fees vary from two hundred, I mean, you'll see them in the thirteen hundreds, you'll see them in the one fifty. You'll see fifty, whatever, like swing, and it depends on the situation they're in. Now, nobody knows why that fee was set years ago, because nobody was here when it was set, so we're just, I don't know. I couldn't tell you. That fee was set years ago because nobody was here when it was set, so we're just, I don't know. I couldn't tell you. And I played with the math. But anyway, I just wanted to educate everybody on. Fire flow, the cost of fire flow is substantial. I would guess, just as a civil engineer, and that's actually my major, was hydraulics and designing systems like this. Probably adding more than fifty percent of your costs because of fire. So that, and then the principle that the state does not allow us to give away anything. You gotta remember before this, it was a prior territory. It was the town having to pay itself in a way.
And that was my question. Where did that money come from? What what did it come out of just? It came out, came out of the general fund.
How much was that?
A hundred and four thousand and okay, so from two thousand twelve to twenty twenty. It was approximately a hundred and four thousand dollars paid annually out of the general fund. Actually to twenty twenty one. And then in twenty twenty two, it went to a hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty five. And I guess that's the only point. That I wanna make at all in this is that it's not like the town saw an opportunity and price gouged over the last year. Our rate has stayed very steady since, you know, two thousand twelve. So. Those nine years, we didn't increase at all despite increasing hydrants. The amount stayed the same. So. And also, if we're gonna talk about board actions, and I know that not all of us read that, and that's fine, because I couldn't have told you. Anything to do with hydrants, but in May of twenty twenty two, we did pass the utility rate. Or the water rate ordinance, which spelled out how much the hydrants cost, like what the rental fee was. So, I mean, yes.
The increase.
The four hundred fifty.
No, from a hundred and five to the one eighteen.
Yes, but we've also gone from the, we don't have historic, we don't have good historical data. The best data I could find is that we had approximately two hundred and twenty hydrants in two thousand six. And now this latest go around, the hundred and thirty eight thousand is based off of three hundred and seven hydrants. So.
What's the actual?
But actual as of today is.
Three forty to three forty seven.
Right.
Do we have a list of those by any chance that?
Do we have which ones are actually working and which ones have been out of service?
There are five that are out of service.
Well, I mean, you know, as as, hold on, just let me finish just real quick, because I'm almost done. I probably didn't do a very good job of explaining this because this has all been a learning experience for me as well when I took on helping with the fire territory. But. The hundred and four thousand dollars that came out of the general fund, the town has that hundred and four thousand now. Because they expect the fire territory to pay, and that's fine. But as we continue to grow, my main concern is if this continues on, like, we went from three hundred and seven now to three hundred and forty or three hundred and forty seven. The fire territory cannot continue to pay four hundred fifty dollars a hydrant times three hundred and forty dollars, I mean, three hundred and forty nine. But that's the point I'm trying to make. And I just want to have a discussion amongst the fire territory board. And the town of Pendleton, because we are married in the in in this arrangement. To come up with a a better plan and what's best for everyone. That's all I'm saying.
So I would say, so the populat- the population drives the hydrant number. So is the population.
Correct, but just as of twenty twenty two, from March to April. And I called up the Kirk Treasures Office with my budget jump from eight thousand and some odd dollars to eleven thousand dollars, and I asked why. I get it, it was because of hydrants. So when I go to try to budget for future. What's an infinite number? I have no idea. Where, when are you guys gonna stop building? How many additions are gonna stop building? So I don't have a magic crystal ball to figure out how many hydrants.
By the time the hydrants go in and function, there is a lead time, not me. To even when we approve a plan, they get the. At least a year.
Yeah.
Or more, I mean, I'd say your barns is being dragged over for several years. Carrotlands, I mean, we knew the count, the town knew the count. Three or four years.
Well, then if that's the case, and it should have got to my office, like, budget appropriately. Because everything from twenty twenty two all the way back to twenty seventeen was a hundred and five thousand dollars, and that's what, it was a static line item. It was automatically, but Jeff was the chief, and Mike was the chief, and Danny was the chief. That's, we just copy paste.
If that was the case, I guess, then I get confused as to why we didn't have an accurate count, like, why this is based on two hundred and thirty hydrants at two hundred and fifty dollars. A hydrant if apparently since two thousand twelve, it's been over four hundred dollars a hydrant.
Because we were told to budget half.
We were told in our first meeting by the in-town board president, the lower four fifty to two fifty.
Yes. Yes, you did. And it was.
Public meeting, we were told to lower from four fifty to two fifty to match Ingles' type of rate at the time. And then the town of work over this next year of lowering that.
To try to figure things out. And we've been dealing with this since October to try to figure this out now.
We went through and did an entire study. Elwood has three hundred and ten hydrants. They pay ninety dollars a hydrant. Thirty to fifty thousand dollars a year. The next closest to us is East Madison, paying around four fifty or forty five thousand. And then we're a hundred and forty four. When you call around and tell departments what we pay, their mouths drop, right? What, you pay how much? We we could go buy a tanker truck and have it paid off within three years. And the hydrant by Steve's house, my parents, thirty one years I've been alive, the hydrant has never once been used for a house fire. The hydrant also set for almost three or four years, broke before it's ever fixed, this last summer. We we paid enough money on that hydrant alone in thirty one years to have a new hydrant every ten years. I mean, it's just.
And and then to go along with with what Sister Chief Gardner was saying. You know, if if I'm paying, I'm just gonna use rough numbers here, a hundred and forty thousand dollars in hydrant rental fee. I need somebody to explain to me what that money is going for. Is it maintenance? Because if it's maintenance, your ISO shows that you have a zero out of seven on the flushing. And inspections and flow testing of all your hydrants. That's huge when it comes to homeowners insurance. A zero out of seven, that puts us at the class four instead of a class five. So if I'm paying that much money for maintenance, why is the maintenance being done?
Not just maintenance.
That's a big.
The cost of the system, more than fifty percent of it is for the flow. What's the bond, you know, off the top of your head, what the bond is for the water treatment plant?
So I'm paying basically twenty percent of the water water budget then, right?
Yeah. Because the expense, the the water is almost free.
So my taxes, as as me as a South Madison Fire Territory now.
It's the facilities that cost the money.
Okay, I get that, but.
And the treatment, the chemicals.
I'm gonna put a, I'm gonna put a Fall Creek Township resident on, so they're paying taxes into the fire territory and they're not getting any benefits from their taxes going to the town of Pendleton because. They can't use hydrants.
But the amount that they were paying to have fire service through. When it was Pendleton Volunteer, they didn't have hydrants then either, and they were still on the hook for a hundred and four thousand dollars. I don't have a hydrant and I'm part of the town. Like, how do you think this makes me feel?
Well, they should put you one in.
Well, I don't.
Forty eight hundred dollars and they'll get you one.
Right, and like the ISO report has four hundred hydrants or some odd that they honored it. I don't even, I don't know what Ingles does. I mean. But we're on the hook for them on the ISO.
Right, and I I can tell you right now, talking to their water, water person Randy. Talking to their billing clerk and one of their town council members, that this whole thing for them. Is gonna be discussed where they can do a water study because they want it off of their plate as well.
Well, somebody has to pay. I mean, they're not gonna like get rid of higher fees.
They do, they do it three ways, so they.
Somebody, either it has to be a hybrid, paid by the department, or paid wholly by the.
So the way Ingles does it is Old Town, Old Town, Newtown. Old Town, which consists of Ingles, the Old Town Ingles and Prairie Hollow. Those ninety hydrants are what the fire department pays in rental fee. Everything else up the six fifty corridor, all the way out to eight hundred south and Summer Lake, that is on the consumer. So they do it two ways.
What does the consumer pay out there?
Dollar six on a hu- on a bill.
Well, they're.
Dollar six or dollar sixty.
They have water clients that are not part of their municipality. Pretty, I mean, that's part of the situation also.
Wha- what I wanna bring to the table, because we could talk about this all night, is if we continue on the same path that we're continuing on right now. There's no way the fire territory can pay every time a new hydrant comes in and then we just increase the bill.
We'll have to go back to volunteer.
I'm just trying to say if we need, if we need to have an open discussion between the town board, the fire territory board, to come up with some sort of solution. And I think the first solution is the water study.
That, that.
Are you talking about the race?
Yeah, the race study, the race study that you brought up a while back. I think that's the first phase. What we're doing here tonight is a Band-Aid to help the fire territory succeed and function through twenty twenty three. But I think we all can agree that with growth and we come with, let's just say in another three years, we have five hundred and fifty hydrants. I mean, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars. If we continue on the same path of the fire territory, we'd be expected to pay. I mean, that would almost be ten percent of their budget. On a levy that they don't get to increase until we have another entity like Ingles come and join.
I guess I'm just confused on the surprise at this point. Like, what, is it because the fire territory's budget was based off of static? Like, what you thought was this gonna be the same and now it's.
Well, what it was, was was last year, the red flag flew up in the air because of the increase on the hydrants. Was because I know that's what I budgeted, was a hundred and five thousand dollars for the year. Well, March and April. That's when the territory was passed and then the April came in. Well, boom, it went up to eleven thousand. I'm trying to figure out, okay, why did it go up? Started doing a little bit of digging research on my end, trying to figure out, okay, what do other communities charge? Then we get the Ingles bill and it's half of what we're paying here. And then another red flag, a bigger one. It's like, okay. Then nobody could tell me exactly where that money goes. I'm just, it's over in this spot and it gets moved to this spot and. It gets rode off into the sunset and nobody really knows. Then we did the ISO report and we come back and it's a zero, so I'm like, okay, if I'm getting. If I'm paying for maintenance and they're not doing the maintenance, then they need to be doing the maintenance because I'm paying for that. I get that. So there was a. A lot of things that added up to try to figure out why this is. So we reached, Jake reached out to several departments. The city of Anderson, when I was on there twenty years ago, nineteen ninety nine, when I came on, they finished that up. Probably two thousand, two thousand one, and they took it from the fire department and put it on the consumer. They did it through whenever their election cycle was. So they actually put it on the consumer. Like I said, you know, the city of Alexandria, they, you know, do it, the Chesterfield pays a little bit, but they buy their water from the city of Anderson. So. Various communities do various different things. Well, here again. The council was presented the budget of fifty seven thousand five hundred dollars. And then now January and February, my appropriation reports has got eleven thousand dollars taken out of it.
So it went up unexpectedly.
Yeah, so.
Well, the talk of growth has never been talked about.
Well, it has.
Go up though, because you just said May and April of last year, it was eleven thousand dollars.
We we were told.
They thought it was.
We were told two hundred and fifty dollars a hydrant.
The budget, and that's what we budgeted.
We budgeted that, turned the budget in, it was approved. And then I guess to add on to this, and Steve was at the last territory meeting, and maybe this is a Jeff question. So there's no written contract between the South Madison Fire Territory and the town of Pendleton for hydrant fees. That there's no, and when you approve the budget, if Jeff Bellamy told us, there's, no one is. Given us contract that was signed and the hydrant rental rates, and then by the town adopt or. Approving our budget last year of fifty seven five hundred, that is a town and fire territory is stating that's what is gonna be charged.
I disagree with that. The budget generally is a projection of what's gonna be spent. It doesn't necessarily reflect actual cost. In fact, the council passed the, what is it, four fifty? That's the price.
No, they passed two fifty.
No, no, we're talking on our water.
So I I think there's a lot of councils and fiscal bodies that will put a budget number that they even know won't be hit for the year, the additional appropriation. Or a loan would be the way to.
So this is good for us. No, this is, if this is the route we go, then starting tomorrow, South Madison Fire Territory, we will reduce our staffing from five people a day. To four people a day due to hydrant rentals. And I mean, seriously, sorry.
I'm not paying a two percent interest on this.
But we've got to pay it back, Scott. And that is the rate you guys are gonna continue to keep. That is an extra person of theirs. And we also have a lot of other things to pay for three years. We're trying to hire staffing and this is where we come back to. We hire ten guys next year, one, five years.
I was an fireman for twenty five years. Don't pull that card on.
Hey, listen, 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 guys, listen. This is kinda getting out of hand a little bit on both sides.
It is when you make a threat like that.
We're not, we're just.
You're the president of the board. You know what our funding is. You know our fiscal responsibilities are. You've seen our staffing.
Pay for that. We just offered up to loan you money and delay that. So why are we the bad guy?
We're not, nobody knew the bad guys.
We just dread because of the hydrant fees to pull this back.
Well, I need to know.
We said, okay, we'll give you a loan. It's really easy. All right. And by the way, because I was the last guy that triggered. A test to beat ISO regulations is back when I was on the fire department and was always driven by the fire chief.
They had one in two thousand and seventeen, so it wasn't the last one.
Well, okay, so listen, listen. I'm gonna say the final thing here and then we're gonna move on. We're gonna do, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss that we've been discussing it. We're gonna vote on this. And then what I bring to the table is. The parties involved in the in in the territory, we we cannot continue with status quo. I think everybody can agree with that. We cannot continue to have the fire territory pay hundreds of thousands of dollars. As the town of Pendleton grows, we have to come up with a better solution. We have options. That we all need to sit down, go to the table and talk. That's all I'm asking. And I don't think that's out of line.
No, and the question that I have.
If you agree that those options are out there.
Right, and the questions that I go.
I'm not pointing to figure why this ended up the way it is, although I will have to say. The first time we ever really got a hold of their budget, it took me thirty seconds, well, two minutes. The first ten online items, I found sixty thousand dollars in mistakes. And I stopped. Because I was like, holy cow.
Which mistakes for those?
There were several.
Okay, did you let me know about those?
And it was already.
All right, this is, this is stuff we don't need to talk about in a public meeting. I'm sorry. We don't.
When I appreciate you going and demeaning how we did our budget and if there was problems that you didn't bring to our attention. I really appreciate that.
It was already, it was already done.
Okay, well anyways, the question that I have is I need an answer because I have to present my initial budget in May. I gotta have an, I gotta have a direction to go.
And what we discussed in the fire territory budget was to 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 come up with a best case scenario and a worst case scenario.
We just need to know is two hundred and fifty dollars or we back to four hundred and fifty dollars?
So ordinance that we have says four hundred and fifty dollars. Like, I I I wasn't. I have never been so involved in the fire territory over the last two years. I have been in the last month. But I can tell you that our ordinance says it's four hundred and fifty one dollars or four hundred and fifty dollars. And so that is what the ordinance says. I was never in a fire territory meeting where we ever discussed this, like. I went back through Zooms trying to see if we had already done this situation where we were going to defer some of these payments. I don't have, there's nothing in our minutes that have said two hundred and fifty dollars, like, and I apologize if that's the story.
There was, there was a vote of five to zero to to suspend it for six months because there was a conversation.
What month was it?
I have no idea, but I know I know councillor had it because he made a comment because it was a moratorium and he said, no, it had to be deferred and everything else. Because there was conversation about it and it was voted five to zero on it.
Okay.
And here again, I can't see anything because nothing's uploaded on YouTube, nor can I see any of the minutes.
All of our meetings are on YouTube. All of our minutes are online. I pro- I I know because I've gone back and.
I have not been able to find.
Uh, or wardrobe toys or hairstyle I've had over the last two years. I guarantee you they're on YouTube.
All right, I will look when I get home again.
And I have gone and looked and I would love to find it. But anyway, on this. The way this is structured right now, there is a correction. The shortfall is eighty one thousand ninety two dollars and eight cents. We need to strike the interest because we have never collected interest on an interdepartmental loan such as this. So the gap between fifty seven five and the one thirty eight is eighty one thousand ninety two dollars. But it needs to reflect that it is a zero percent interest or no interest. And then we probably need to discuss the term. Are we good with the three years or what's the situation there?
My thought on it is, this is a Band-Aid until we can come up with something that we all can agree upon. I mean, so we could have another resolution that trumps this.
Yes, we can revise this. Yeah, absolutely.
We can revise this. So I just want to be able to have the fire territory possibly not have to get another bond loan for twenty twenty three. And this is the Band-Aid that can help that happen.
So when does this start?
What payments have been made so far, Karen? What payments have been made so far, Karen? And not to put you on the spot, but you're sitting here, so.
January, February and March.
Okay, so. Supposed to be April.
So it comes out monthly, right?
So it comes out monthly, but it's whenever the fifty-seven, five that is budgeted, whenever the eleven thousand, then start.
Okay, once that's depleted, then this will kick in.
So the first three months of the year, money's going to be taken out from fire hydrants. Is that what you're saying?
It already.
It already has.
Yes.
Okay, is that the eleven thousand?
Yes.
So thirty-three thousand dollars?
A little more than that.
Yeah, and it, like, like Jake said, this, this is very pivotal because we do have a part-time person that we are paying at the English station that, in order for us to make the loan payments back, we're going to have to probably not run him because we were told the hydrant real fee will go away. That's why we got that third person there. He, that hydrant real fee is paying for that operational person.
The hydrant rental fee, we're not going beyond what your budget is set up for. The fifty-seven, five, like it's going to take that fifty-seven, five to zero and then we're going to loan you the gap. So it's not like your budget's going to go beyond the fifty-seven, five for two thousand and twenty-three, if that makes sense what I'm saying.
That's why I asked, when does this start? Does it start January one? Because I'm already halfway through that fifty-seven already.
Right. And once it hits zero, then this loan's going to kick in. So it's not going to go beyond the fifty-seven, five that you have budgeted currently, which that shouldn't, I mean.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
No.
I'm just saying that if you have fifty-seven, five sitting in a line item that is for hydrant fees, what else would you be using that for other than hydrant fees? So this is the gap that you tack on to the fifty-seven, five to get to the full one thirty-eight, which is what the rental actually is until we can figure out what's going on. But we're not going to go beyond your fifty-seven, five that you have in that line item for hydrant rental for two thousand and twenty-three. So it shouldn't have any bearing on staffing or part-time people or anything like that. Because you're not going to, you can't spend money that's not allocated anyway, and that fifty-seven, five has been allocated for hydrant.
Okay.
I, well.
No.
Is that fine? I mean, okay.
Karen, that's why, that's why I'd be off with the comment that you were going to have to take.
Because.
Online, right, in two thousand and twenty-three, right now. That was, that was a low shot and I'm sorry I came back with another bunch of the note because you did me a little while, a bunch of them. So that was not a fair money.
So Karen is exactly eleven thousand per month or change.
And some change or something.
Yeah.
Up to fifty-seven, five.
Well, just eleven thousand dollars a month. That's what everybody keeps talking about. That's what mattered. Thirty-two thousand dollars a year. We have been, the fire department has budgeted a hundred and five since nineteen or twenty seventeen, right?
Two thousand and twelve.
My point is it's twenty-some thousand dollar difference when you're talking numbers.
I think what we're coming up is we budgeted fifty-seven, five hundred when that budget is approved last year by the town council. That is the number we go off of. And then when you come back in and say, no, it's still the hundred and something. I mean, that's any, any person's daily life. If you tell me something's going to cost five dollars and you come back and tell me it's twenty dollars and I only had five dollars to spend. If that's, that's what we're coming up. We were told fifty-seven, five hundred. That was a budget that was approved. So that's the numbers we're working off of. And yes, the loan's great, but it puts us right back into the hundred and roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars when we were told fifty-seven, five hundred was approved.
Put that in your budget next year. At a hundred and forty, whatever it is.
Well, we'll cross next year. We get to next, I mean, when we get ready to do your budget for next year.
This is just going to gap it for right now. You don't want the fifty-seven, five.
Yes.
That's what we're going with right now. We got rise of right now, three years, and that's something we can even discuss. Zero interest. Three, five, I mean, I don't know what, that's what, what to get with Scott on. But you're going to stay with the fifty-seven, five this year. We had budgeted.
And let's not even look about, talk about the eighty-some thousand for right now. This is a Band-Aid to get us through two thousand and twenty-three to, so we all can talk and figure something out. That's fair.
I mean, and I, I think, because what we are going to do a rate study this year, correct?
I mean, as long as it, yes, as long as the train keeps moving down the track, because like I said, we started these public meetings all the way back whenever. And, you know, like I said, March, April, May, because I know I called upstairs and like, why is this going up? And why am I paying so much more? Well, then we've had meetings and we've had meetings. It's like, okay, do this. No, it's changed. We've. First, we was like, don't even pay it. We're going to take care of it. Don't worry about it. Then it was half and then it was like, okay, now it's full price. And then. Well, now we know it's fifty-seven, five for the, that's it for two thousand and twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
And we have a three-year deferral of payment until, and that gives us time to come up with a new solution.
Three-year deferral on the eighty-two.
Yes. Next year, if, if we're still working on things for next year's budget, it'll still be fifty-seven, five.
You don't put yourself in that position.
We're not. We're going to get it all, we're going to get it figured out before, right, is what I'm saying.
This could be an undetermined amount.
Yes.
Just put a question mark on there.
So do I have a motion to approve a resolution to borrow the funds from, or the SMFBT to borrow the funds from the water utility? In the amount of eighty-one thousand, ninety-two dollars and eight cents with zero percent interest.
Let me, let me ask one more question. Is it Jeff, Jeff? Is it legal, Jeff, to loan money without interest?
Yes, to, to.
Okay, to the city of Pendleton. And I know we've done this.
Okay. And one quick thing, I know Rissa and I have, and, and Shane, I've talked to a lot of people. We've had really productive conversations and I, I, I just want to keep that train rolling and I know we can get this all worked out. A hundred percent possible.
You're not going to fail.
Well, I just, yeah, because I mean, hydrant rentals fee, because I'll send tankers in and never use it, so I'm not paid. So I mean, that's the, you know, I don't want to go that route because they're there, but I think, you know, as long as there's a long-term solution for the growth, I'm happy with it because right now we got nobody can tell me when the growth is going to stop. And I don't know how many hydrants are going to go in and I just don't want another surprise going, hey, okay, it's another thirty thousand dollars. We're going to raise it. I'm like.
Well, you're going to get surprised because none of us know what.
At least.
None of us have crystal ball.
Here, here's, here's the surprise. I know. Here's the surprise though. As long as it comes across my desk and additions going in, I can make that necessary changes.
Yeah, I agree.
So that's all I ask for.
All right, Madam President.
Do I have a motion to approve a resolution of the town of Pendleton authorizing borrowing funds from the town water utility in the amount of eighty-one thousand, ninety-two dollars and eight cents with zero percent interest for a period of three years?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor of approving the resolutions, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried. Last thing on the agenda, uh, printed out motion of ordinance to, uh, retain unused vacation benefits. Preliminary, we'll call this twenty-three oh seven. I emailed this out earlier this week. So you guys, nothing has changed. And as far as I know, Scott, do you have anything you want to add?
So we have a policy on vacation. You use it or you don't use it. So this, this last snowstorm right around Christmas made me realize that I was going to have to pull possibility to pulling people in that had saved up vacations so they spent time with their family. That we were at, pull them out, that we're going to be able to. After all, they did have to be, it almost insignificant. Brings a light, the fact that we have to punish guys two different ways. We have a vast snowstorm around Christmas. They have to pull them in, away from their family. So I just thought it was.
That's a bunch of bull.
So basically.
Hey, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute. We talked about this yesterday. We agreed that this was a manager's job to regulate that. If Ricky doesn't get two days, then you make sure he gets next time. This doesn't have to be lowered into paper and, and everything ripped up. That's a manager's job to manage his people.
After the HR situations we found ourselves in over the last three years, I don't think it's hurting anything by having extra documentation is my opinion on the situation.
Willie, I have no power to place things on this. It's in the power of it.
I know, but this.
But you're yelling at me for.
Well, we had this conversation yesterday.
I know, and I, and I don't.
No, I wasn't in the conversation and I'm the one that sets the agenda. It magically got pulled off when I came to the office yesterday.
No, I'm not. I'm just wondering what that's our call.
Nobody had to talk with me. I said last Friday when I was attempting to set the agenda, this was going to be on it because I've been kicking around my emails since before I even took this gig. And so I put it on there and then, what?
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks. And so I was trying to follow through on something. We had had discussions internally that this was a necessary thing for Dawn to be able to manage vacation time. Nobody had a conversation with me taking it off the agenda. It just massively went away. And I think it's my job to set the agenda. So I put it back on there because I think that more documentation, as far as making sure everybody's treated fairly, is never a bad thing. But that could just be me wanting to put things on paper.
No, as the town grows, it's better to document it. It's easier for everyone to keep track of. If somebody's not here or is no longer with the town, then it's better for it to be on paper. Perfect example is the fire hydrant cost.
Exactly.
All right, but this ordinance says the request to carry over unused vacation benefits is approved by the town manager, town chief, marshal, or perpetrator. That's the supervisors. That's the same thing is what I'm saying.
But it's, and it's painted in writing. Now we have something to back us up for future uses.
The paper trail.
That's all it is.
My one question, the, the one it is, I totally agree with it, but I don't want the employees trying to bank time like they could have taken it off, but they didn't. And then they go back and say, well, I want to add that to two thousand and twenty-four. This is only when they.
This is.
In other words, I gotta make that awful call saying.
Right.
I have to pull you off of vacation with written yet, and I don't have that.
Right, because they don't want me to.
Then they're done. Yeah.
Because that's a terrible idea.
All I have.
You actually did want to draw the snow piles.
Well, I absolutely want you to pay the fixing with your own, too. So.
Okay. Any more discussion on twenty-three oh seven? We have a motion for approval, twenty-three oh seven ordinance that Pendleton Town Council permitting certain of town employees to retain certain unused vacation benefits.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of approving twenty-three oh seven, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Do I have to?
Do you want to do?
Where, are we not going to have any weather related issues between them? Okay. All right. Anything else before we adjourn? Public comment? Anybody holding over from earlier?
Uh, my name is Bryce. I'm in office at South Street at one nineteen. Um, actually I have the free comments. They're all very short. Um, I'm here on behalf of you and Stanley, my sister Amanda Black. Uh, the two of us have been suddenly put in a position of having to step in and try to organize and move things forward. So we wanted to express our, our thanks for the town and the diligence of diligence, especially with Mr. Gray and trying to follow up with the, the Rincon situation. And we'll do our best to be, whatever we can do in helping to facilitate that. Um, second unrelated comment. Um, and Scott's evidently aware of this. We have a never-ending problem with semis in the alley right behind you. You have, the smaller trucks are really not a problem, but the semis, there's no way for any of the semis to actually get out of the alley, onto the property of any place that they're delivering to. And there's, because the alley's narrow and the buildings are right there, we have a recurring problem with the fleets are involved. I'm not sure how often, it's often, with the alley being blocked for long periods of time. In talking to some of the officers and some of the food delivery people, I have a thought to just throw out here. Um, in other communities, one of the ways they solve that is to put a dedicated loading zone right out in front of what would be State Street only during the early morning hours. So the people who are running the business, they have to make a person available to accept that delivery at five or six in the morning. It doesn't interfere with the daytime use of our valuable parking out here, but it avoids the problem of the semis blocking all access to all businesses, all the driveways in the back block. So I'd like to suggest maybe that we think about an ordinance which would keep the semis off of the alley, but in return provide them with a reasonable place to have access to these businesses with it's not impinging on any of the uses.
Is it? So I, so I'm just thinking about, so if there is plenty of space in the morning, you're right, until the shops open up.
Yes.
So, um, so really all we would need to do is have an ordinance that says deliveries may be bay in the front, taking up so many spots. I don't know how many that would be, but they have to be cleared by a certain time.
And, yes, and in order to make that work, we would need to mark that off so that overnight parkers are not obstructing the truck making the delivery.
You don't want them doing on both sides of the street at the same time.
There would just basically be no parking room. Yeah.
From four in the morning.
Four in the morning until.
Four to six or something.
Yeah. Okay, I get it. That's a good idea.
Something like that would solve it.
I've been looking for solutions.
Well, we, we've given a lot of thought to this, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Third, third comment on the, the fire territory, and I did come to talk about this, but I happen to have done some undergraduate work on this topic forever ago. The free rider problem is what we're really talking about here. We have all these people who don't have benefit of the use of the hydrant and yet we're having the fire territory pay for the use of the hydrants from areas that don't benefit from it. And to the extent that that led us to property tax rules, we have all the people who don't pay property taxes who are taking advantage of the benefit of that. So to the extent that we can shift that real cost onto the people who have the actual benefit of the hydrants, being the consumers of the water, it actually makes it more fair to everybody involved.
So I would argue that's not quite right. So Rissa, for example, says she doesn't have a higher. Or is that tanker filled up, up a higher? And if the hydrant is a miss, it should be named the hydrant fee. It's for lack of a better way to do it. That's what it's calculated on because there is some proportionality between hydrants and your population and it's also driven by the number of structures. So that's why it's common practice. It's a uh, fast and fast, easy way to calculate what that fee is, but it's the capacity to do fire flow. And so whether that hydrant has to be, but that hydrant that's being used for a fire is located in front of the house or located two miles away, you still, it's the fire flow capacity that you're really, really paying for. It's not that part of that, that appliance called the hydrant, yes, is part of it. But usually there's a direct relationship between fire load, population, um, and that sort of thing. And so that's probably why historically a fire hydrant fee is, is the number of hydrants is used to calculate the fee, but really the cost is not that appliance at whatever it was, thirty-eight hundred dollars. It is the ability to have a fire flow and the capacity.
And, and, and what I'm suggesting is not disagreeing with that. What I'm saying is you have a lot of structures which are not contributing on the levy at all. And so if you shift some of the cost to those other structures, it makes it more fair for everybody.
You mean shift it to the levy, which is an argument not to put it on the customer.
Put it on. It wouldn't be fair to put all of it on the water supply, but to put some proportion of it on the users of the water. So for example, if you have a, uh, you have a building that for some reason is exempt from paying any taxes, they still have the same lease protection, the same fire protection, and yet they don't pay anything. And so all the rest of us are subsidizing that use. And so if we make that exempt structure, pay some proportion of its real cost, then that makes the cost more fair to everybody else.
So it's a fee.
It's a fee, but it's not on the tax rule.
Then you have more cost, more people that aren't covered by a hydrant. That also get the.
Because they're not customers. If you go to a fee on the, on the water, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be fair to make it all be.
Scott, to add on at this point, we have multiple people on eighty square miles that would never get a benefit of the Pendleton Department. Even if we needed water for their house fire, similarly.
Well, I, yeah, I know there's some drafting locations and that's.
Well, even Madison Avenue and five minutes south, my animals up there. We have a. Well, even Madison Avenue and five hundred south, my animals up there. We have a house fire at my animal's house. We're not coming back to Pendleton to get water. We're going across Madison Avenue. That's the way to the hydrant.
Right, you're going to go to the closest hydrant.
So there, even those users.
And even if it's not a Pendleton hydrant, it's a mutual aid hydrant. So vice versa would happen to.
So that's where I think to this point, it's not, that's back to our point and I think it just seems to be. It's not fair to the eighty square miles that we cover that those people's tax money are going to just Pendleton fire. Instead benefit the town residents Pendleton. Where it really doesn't, it's, it's those people that are living in the country. Marissa's waiting on a tanker instead of us using that hydrant. She's not going to get adequate water supply. People all through township, most all through township, it's no support. Supposed to fall free township. We're going to go to Anderson to fill water. Stoner Drive, Slack Drive, that entire area up there is going to be used by Anderson Water as a state statue that you cannot fill for water use. Or during a fire. So the Pel comes, gets water from the Town of Pendleton for a structure fire in their area. You guys can't send them water.
Right.
Right, so that's where we're just trying to get to the rate studies and putting this back on users that actually. Get the use of Pendleton.
We just have to be careful about putting random, not random fees, but increasing these utility rates. More than what they already are. As we are in a pro-growth situation, we don't want that to become prohibitive. Of businesses coming here, people moving here, those things. And so that's the, the truth will be in the utility study when it is done. And to see how we measure up and what the forecast is. And so. I think it's very premature to say it needs to go on the consumer or it needs to go and stay with the fire department. I think that. We have to wait until our research is done before we make any kind of. You know, agreement that that's what needs to happen one way or the other. Is that fair to say? Do we think, I mean, okay. Okay. Any other public comment? All right. Anybody on Zoom with public comment? Any hands raised? Okay. Okay.
Bryce, I'd like to thank you and your sister for coming tonight. We really appreciate your efforts and we all follow your dad. We're sorry about your loss.
Okay, with nothing else, nobody on Zoom, no more, no further public comment. I make a motion to adjourn at seven thirty two.